Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Bang your gavel.
Oh, sorry. Here it is. I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Chris, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Okay, tonight's an exciting night. I believe we have special recognition for our PTA reflection winners.
We actually have an opportunity to recognize two groups tonight. We'll start with our reflection winners. If we have any of the students that were winners for our reflections competition, step to my left. Bring your artwork with you. Come on up. I know we have a few of you that were able to make it. Yep, come on up. Each year, our fantastic PTA puts on a competition called Reflections. This year's theme was Heroes Around Me. And a number of our students competed. And as we often do at Northwest Local School District, a number of our students won because that's what we do. And so we have a couple of those students here to represent. I'm going to ask them to come up, say their name, and then also to what school they're from, and then tell us a little bit about the artwork that they have. And then once you're past me, I'll have you shake hands as you go. Well, actually, we'll line up for picture first, and then we'll shake hands. So don't leave. Stay right up here for me, okay? We'll have the first young man come on up. Actually, let's step forward.
My name's Brendan, and I go to Corrine Elementary.
And will you show us your art? And tell us a little bit about what that is about?
It's about a firefighter because my cousin is a firefighter.
Hi, my name's Isabel Snyder, and I go to White Oak Middle School. I did dance choreography. Me and one of my good friends did a dance together for Heroes Around Me. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alexa Kendall, and I go to White Oak Middle School. And I wrote a poem called "Our Hero," kind of just giving praise to the people who aren't always kind of recognized.
My name is Jasmine Nichols. I go to Corrine Elementary School. And my picture is someone recycling. That shows somebody being a hero by not littering.
Okay, friends, gather for a picture. Families, I know you have pictures to take as well. All right, what I'd like you to do, because there's so many wires, I'd like you to step actually behind the table and shake hands with the board members as you make your way out. And then families, we're going to actually have you step all the way to the glass where my friend Jenny Blass will be there to meet you, to take a group picture. And that's also your way to get out of here. So you'll meet everyone back there, okay? Give them another round of applause, everybody. While we're making that transition, if I could have all of my PTA teachers of the year step to my left. There are certificates to grab on the table. And also come up with your representation, whoever's speaking on your behalf. Again, step on up to my left. All right, kiddos, you're going to meet my friend Jenny Blass, who's back there in the door with your families to go out and take a picture. You're welcome to come back in. Teachers, if you haven't grabbed your certificate, they are on the table. As they're making their way up. Again, our fantastic PTA gets a chance to honor a teacher a year, although all of them deserve all the honors. They get to choose one. Having seen that selection process, it is very, very difficult for their staff to pick and choose, or sorry, their PTA to pick and choose amongst all the nominations. I know that they represent their staff very well, and we're very proud to have them. We're actually going to have them tonight and at the next meeting as well, based on schedules, whenever they can make it. So when they come forward, their representative is going to come up, introduce them, name school, and then also describe a little bit about them as well. So let's have our first come on up.
Hello, I'm Kim Yates, and I represent Pleasant Run Middle School. And this is our Educator of the Year, Jennifer Hording. Nine characteristics of a great teacher. One, respects students. Two, creates a sense of community and belonging in the classroom. Three, warm, accessible, enthusiastic, and caring. Four, high expectations for all students. Five, has her own love of learning. Six, a skilled leader. Seven, can shift gears. Eight, collaborates with colleagues on an ongoing basis. And nine, maintains professionalism in all areas. Mrs. Hording, our sixth grade math teacher at PRMS, has emphasized all these characteristics. However, there are two that resonate. She is a warm, accessible, enthusiastic, and caring teacher that creates a sense of community and belonging in her classroom. She always has a warm smile on her face and a pleasant demeanor. Mrs. Hording truly cares about the education and well-being of her students. She conducts study clubs after school for her students to assist them with any opportunities they may have in math. If a student is unable to attend study club, she is willing to assist them on their lunch hour or recess time. As an avid runner, she brought her love of running to PRMS through the Running Club. She is supportive of the PTA, rather than being attended meetings, assisting with night Olympics, or promoting the PTA activities. Below is a note that was sent to Mr. Dunn about Mrs. Hording that shows how she is willing to go above and beyond for her students. "Mr. Dunn, I'm sure you already know how great of a teacher Mrs. Hording is. However, I thought it would still share..." I thought it still would share. "My son, Cameron, made a bowl in art class. To ensure it made home safely, Mrs. Hording took the time to wrap it for him. The next morning, he unwrapped it to show me. And to both of our surprise, the following note was inside the bowl. You can't see it, but she had put the bowl, and inside it had a note that said, 'Just a little note to let you know how awesome I think you are, Mrs. Hording.'" And then I said, "Please continue to sport and hire great teachers like Mrs. Hording." So that is why this number is why she's here.
Hold on now. Where are you going? Pictures are up front, right over here. And then at the end, we'll have you shake everybody's hand. If you want to take two steps down. Yep, and then we'll have you... There you go, everybody can see behind you. All right, next up.
My name is Tana Slaven, and I am the PTA President at Struble. And I would like to introduce Leslie Arance. She is our Educator of the Year. Mrs. Arance is a kindergarten teacher at Struble, and she creates such a warm and welcoming atmosphere for her students. This has been especially important with the first year of the full-day kindergarten for students. She's done a fantastic job with her team as well to create that environment in this big transition for the kids. As a PTA member, Mrs. Arance is wonderful. We can always count on her for all of our events. And she sets up at Strickers Grove. She lines up kids at Santa's Secret Shop. She is even a bounce house monitor, which is one of the hardest jobs out there at our carnival. So Mrs. Arance can always be found... She can always be found giving hugs to her kids and handshakes to their families and really going that extra mile outside of school hours. And with two young daughters, that really is sometimes, I think, a sacrifice for her, but she really sees her students as children of her own. So we are proud to honor her.
We have someone by themselves. All right, tell me your name.
Valerie Cook.
Valerie Cook, and from?
Corrine Elementary.
From Corrine Elementary. Ms. Kleimer, I know that you're here. Would you join us for just a second and tell us a little bit about Ms. Cook? He thought he was going to avoid it. He thought wrong. Ms. Kleimer, could you just tell us a few words about this fantastic teacher?
Good evening. This is Mrs. Cook. She's a fifth grade teacher here at Corrine Elementary School. She does a great job for us. She also is part of the leadership team in the building, as well as organizes the book club that meets on Tuesdays, Tuesday mornings every week. And so we're very happy to have her get this great award. She does a great job for us. So Ms. Cook, fifth grade teacher.
Given the fact that Ms. Kleimer doesn't know what day it is, I'm assuming he doesn't go to the book club. All right, just step right over to the side, right over there. So this evening, I get to represent White Oak Middle School and Kevin Gale. And to my left is someone I would consider a friend and probably one I would consider one of my best hires ever. Jessica Carer is an unbelievable employee for this district, representative of our community, and just a general kid enthusiast. William Arthur Ward said, "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains. The superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires." There are so many good, superior, and great teachers at White Oak that this is never an easy decision to make. However, this teacher is truly among the great teachers in the world. In the past three years at White Oak Middle School, she is one of the most fought-after, fought-over teachers to be in the classroom. Every adult wants her assistance. Every student wants her in the classroom, and every athlete wants her as a coach. She's a leader in all aspects of education. She pushes the kids to take risks that they never would have considered. She forces her peers to become stronger educators. She takes on endless tasks for the community, all to help everyone at White Oak Middle School. In the past three years, this teacher has done everything asked of her, and then some, and she does it all with a smile. Every morning, she is swarmed with kids who want to give her a hug, tell her about their successes, or come to her with their problems because all the students know she will fix any of their situations, and she does it with such compassion, no matter how big or small the issue. This teacher has taken on every responsibility imaginable. She began being an aide in the classroom, then stepped up taking the community role of PTA president, then was pushed into coaching. She single-handedly doubled, tripled, or even quadrupled the size of every activity she is involved with, all because of her leadership as a teacher. The students want to follow her wherever she goes. She has pushed the students to achieve new levels of success in all aspects of life. I have seen her talk down students ready for physical confrontations, repair friendships among her teammates, push the most timid students to come out of their shell with her singing and dancing... Display. Fix students' eyebrows? That's a new one. Okay. Give fashion advice, but most importantly, she shows every single person at White Oak Middle School how much she truly cares for their success. The 2018-2019 Teacher of the Year is truly a great teacher. She has inspired everyone that she interacts with, and everyone who interacts with her leaves a better individual than before they met her. Ms. Carer could not be more deserving. A big round of applause. So in full disclosure, I came here tonight to recognize Jenny Hording, who's my teacher at Pleasant Run Middle School. But I looked up and saw my dear friend Brett Van Gessbeek up here with nobody to introduce him. And he works way too hard and does way too great a job at Northwest to get up here and not have anybody talk about him. So I decided to get up and say a few words. Probably not very articulate because I'm just going off the top of my head right now, so forgive me ahead of time. At my time at Northwest, I was at Northwest as an assistant principal back from 2007 to 2012. You'd be hard pressed to find any staff member at Northwest High School there as long and as many hours as Brett Van Gessbeek. This man has coached almost every sport imaginable, from cross-country to girls' basketball to track and baseball. When he coached girls' basketball, at least when I was there, they were terrible. Like, one, like, two games a year, and I had to cover the games, and it was painful. But a few years later, after I left, a few years later, he actually was voted the SWAC Coach of the Year. So he really took a program that was down in the dumps and really pulled them to some reasonable success, which is awesome. He does a lot with Student Senate, which is our student council at Northwest, United Knights, which is our student ethic leadership program. Mr. Van Gessbeek has been involved in that, I think, since day one, which was 12 years ago, I think, at this point. He has taken students out of town to look at colleges. He would take his cross-country runners up to Northern Ohio to get an experience of going to a meet in Northern Ohio and taking a weekend and staying at a hotel and getting to do all that fun stuff as kids. He's truly student-centered. In addition to that, he's an excellent educator, a very motivational history teacher. The students loved having him in class. He went through a program... Remind me what it was. The history... Off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Yeah, teaching American history, where they traveled to Washington, DC, took classes there. So he was very committed to his students in the classroom as well as out. But again, I just feel like if you want the definition of a student-centered teacher at Northwest High School or at any building, you look no further than Mr. Van Gessbeek. The teachers know that he cares about them. I think you could pull any teacher in the hallway, and they would tell you, if you had the list, maybe five staff members that you knew truly cared about them or were proud to be a Northwest Knight, they would say Mr. Van Gessbeek. So for all those reasons, I didn't want him to stand up here and just hold his certificate and move on. I felt like he deserved more than that. So Brett, we're really proud that you're with us, and we're really thankful for what you do at Northwest. Ladies and gentlemen, to my right are a number of our PTA Educators of the Year, and I believe that they deserve a standing ovation. Would you join me? All right, I will now have all of you and your families join us between the glass doors where my friend Jenny Blass will be back there to take your picture. It's also a great chance for you to go, because I know you have a lot of things to do. Thank you to the board for the opportunity.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to congratulate all of you and thank all of you for being here as well. Okay. We're going to move on to the legislative update. Joe, do you have one?
I really don't have anything at all.
Okay. Do we have a student achievement, the ASAM report, tonight?
Yes. In honor of being here at Pleasant Run Elementary, we are going to have great things happening at Pleasant Run Elementary. We're going to have a group of students from PRA share their experience and learning from visits to the arts and their field trips. Okay. Thanks for being here, board. Thank you for having us. We really appreciated it. Pleasant Run Elementary, having an opportunity to talk with you about great things that are going on at Pleasant Run Elementary. I'm not going to talk a whole lot about the things that are going on, but I did want to talk with you just quickly and introduce Ms. Amora Higgins. And Amora is going to communicate with you guys tonight about one of the great experiences that our third, fourth, and fifth grade students had an opportunity to experience. An evening, a night, spent the night at the zoo. So I'll let her talk about that. But I wanted to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to do that with the students, and it was a great experience for them. Ms. Tracy Johnson, who spearheaded this and got this going with the zoo, I wanted to thank her, the PTA as well. We appreciate all your support and all of the teacher chaperones. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Amora and let her talk to you guys about what they did.
So, in these pictures, as you can see up here, we were learning about how box turtles can survive in the wild, and we got to touch them. And it was very educational and fun at the same time. So the next day, after we spent the night with the manatees, we got to go exploring. We had an hour before the zoo even opened, and then an hour after the zoo opened to just explore with our groups wherever we want. And this is just one of the groups up here that went to see the reptiles. In this, we learned about how the screech owl is native, and we weren't able to touch the screech owl because of this, because otherwise we would be hurting them and their environment since they were native. And then the snake up there... Fifth grade personally didn't get to see it, but I know third and fourth, I believe, got to see it, and they got to touch it, and they learned a lot about that. This, we have cockroaches and turtles that people got to hold, touch, and just have fun and play with them. This is a little bit of the teachers and the students touching the cockroaches and learning about why they hiss and everything. This is from exploring the armadillo. They got to go see the armadillo and the owls and the reptiles. This is when we had our explore time. These are just some of the groups having fun. Again, this was when we were exploring, and that was a red panda, I believe. And this was my group, and we went to go see the elephants. And they had this ice-smash thing. They had, like, fruit frozen in the ice, and we got to see the elephants pick at it and eat. And then we're at the gorillas in the middle picture. And that's me over there alone, hanging on the little vine thing. This is when we were in... We were learning about the hissing cockroaches again, the snake, and then the birds were really funny in the morning. And then we had some other events. Today, the fourth and fifth grade got to go to the Black Violin Concert. And the kindergarten will be going to the...
Northern Kentucky University.
Northern Kentucky University to look at the plants.
Plantarium.
Plantarium. I forget how to say that. And then, I can't really... Zack Morgan came or is...
Zack Morgan came and sang songs to the K for Two students.
I wouldn't know that because I'm not Kathy Two.
Because you're not K for Two, and you weren't there. And then Kathy Wade.
Oh, she, earlier this year, she taught us about classical music and jazz and the history behind it with slavery and everything. And then what do we have? Rick Sawash learned about... We learned about famous Ohio historians with him. And then Duke Energy performed, how we can save resources and save energy.
So what was your favorite thing you did at the zoo?
Probably getting to explore, like, before the zoo even opened, because we got an hour before the zoo opened to our whole selves.
Did the manatees sleep when you slept? Or were they awake?
They were awake. They were kind of off and on. Like, I would wake up in the middle of the night. They were just swimming around. And then sometimes when I woke up, they were sleeping, so...
That'd be pretty cool. Thank you. And we would like to again thank the PTA and Ms. Johnson and all the staff that supported getting all of these kids together and organized to get to all of these events, whether they're bringing them here or going out into the community. The experiences are very valuable to their learning and add to the excitement of school. So we just wanted to share the good stuff going on here at PRA.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We'd also like to take a minute to recognize Amora. Is your... Do you have family here with you? And we'd like to thank you too for all your support, and we appreciate you sharing all your adventures with us. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to Butler Tech update.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up Chris Trentman, our satellite supervisor. Thank you. Tonight, we have our criminal justice program led by Jeremiah Morgan. This year, they've done a lot of great accomplishments, so I'm going to let them tell you about, including finishing first in the regionals for the second year in a row in the forensic competition. And they will actually be competing at state tomorrow, so they have an early bus ride up to Columbus to get to. So that's why they wanted to be excited to tell you all about their adventures this year.
Thanks, Mr. Trentman. Again, I'm Sergeant Jeremiah Morgan. Some faces I've seen before, some new faces. We presented about four years ago when I was brand-new, and I think we used Mr. Detschel for the pat-down. Mr. Nihouse was our six-foot-seven cadet at the time. So just a quick rundown. I want to give you some updates on some of our exciting things happening in the program and turn it over to three of our fantastic cadets. So four years ago, when I took the program over, it was a struggling program. It was about four years in its infancy. Now we are... This is my fourth year. We had 12 seniors and about seven juniors. Now we're putting about 30 juniors and 30 seniors in the class each year. And this year, we had about 87 people apply or show interest. So the program's doing great things. A couple of things that we've instituted in the last few years. Number one, we're using actual body cameras, just like Cincinnati Police Department, Corrine Police Department. They use that when they practice traffic stops. Number two, since then, we have built a crime scene scenario house. Some of you have been able to see it. If not, you're more than welcome to stop by any time. It's full of live mannequins, plenty of blood, and anything you would think of for CSI, where the cadets can go inside and practice their skills. We also became the first in the Midwest, not just the state of Ohio, but the Midwest, and possibly one of the first that we can find in the entire United States to implement drones in our program. Butler Tech guru Matt King came in last two weeks ago and gave our seniors the course, and they will be testing to receive their federal aviator drone license next week. So a lot of exciting things. The last couple of years, we've had a couple of cadets receive Presidential Scholarships to Thomas More. One young lady wants to be an attorney, and the president of Thomas More himself came in and presented her with a Presidential Scholarship. And another prominent attorney and judge in the Cincinnati area has picked up her scholarship. So she'll have six years of law school for free, which was really outstanding. Another young lady, Roxy Seda. Roxy wanted to be a forensics investigator, and Dr. Sprague at the Miami Valley Crime... I'm sorry, the Bowling Green Crime Lab, where we go every year, accepted her in the program. She's currently studying to be a forensics investigator. So we also have a lot of great stories. Mr. Nihouse, who patted you down four years ago, is now the starting right tackle for Tennessee and is expected to be drafted soon. So a lot of great success stories that we're building on, and these young ladies are just another example of how we're continuing to build that program. What they do is, last year, I gave them an opportunity to compete against seniors. Each year, we compete in Skills USA Crime Scene Competition. And what that is, is I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about it. But the senior year, they get a forensic program. The same thing I went through to be certified CSI. So it's 18 weeks of CSI out of a college book, same one that UC uses. And they do get college credits for these books that they go through, the courses that they take. They were just juniors last year, and they decided they wanted to try to compete, even though they don't get the course. So I gave them a small spoon-fed portion of it. They're very competitive young ladies, and they actually, surprised to me, they upset our seniors. They're very, um, competitive young ladies, and they actually, surprised to me, uh, they upset our seniors. So they won our local competition, and I thought that was great, so I was really proud of them. However, uh, the best was yet to come. So, we went up to the regional competition, and I kind of played it down and said, "Hey, you're going up against seniors who have had 18 weeks of this. The fact that you're even here is phenomenal." Uh, and they won it last year as juniors. So this year, uh, we let everybody compete against them, but it wasn't even close again. Once again, they, they wiped out the competition, and they won the local. And we went to regionals again, and they are reigning back-to-back regional champions. So tomorrow, uh, we will be getting on a bus at 5:00 a.m. and leaving De Russell Lee and heading up to Columbus where they will compete. Uh, the only bad thing is, no matter how well we do, which I expect a really good showing out of these young ladies, no matter how well we do, we cannot go to nationals. Two of them have committed to military and will be leaving for boot camp in June. And regionals is not held until the end of Ju- or, I'm sorry, the nationals are not held until the end of June. So, very, very proud of these young ladies, and I'm going to let them tell you about what they've learned to do, um, in depth. Uh, they learned everything that people that work for me at a crime scene know how to do. However, they've learned it a lot earlier, so very proud of these young ladies. This is Taylor Heffron.
All right, um, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity that you've given us today in order to speak in front of you all. It's very honoring, and I'm excited to be here. So, a little bit about what we do in the crime scene. I am the sketch artist, and this is Hannah over here. Um, she goes through and does measurements with Lindsay. And, um, Lindsay is in charge of our crime scene log. So any evidence that we find within the crime scene, any DNA evidence, any physical evidence, she writes it down, she describes all of it. And then Hannah takes our pictures, so she'll go around and take pictures of any of the evidence that we have and document that. And we also take a short video of the crime scene, maybe about 30 seconds to a minute long, just to make sure we have everything in there. Um, it's a really cool opportunity personally, I think, because, you know, you get that 18-week forensics course, and it, you know, you're getting college experience. We get opportunities for college credit within the class, and, um, it's just really exciting to go and do. It's an outside-of-classroom experience, inside-of-classroom experience also, so it's just really exciting.
So in closing, what these young ladies do in the competition, they're put into a room. Uh, they can't see into the room until the competition starts. When the doors open, they are giving, they're given 30 minutes to solve one of the most horrible crime scenes you could think of. It's all obviously mock and replicated. Uh, they have to take photographs, locate the evidence, and, uh, do a triangulation method, reconstruction of the crime scene, gather the DNA, package it for the crime lab, photographs from every angle, um, and, and all that while keeping sanity. And they've done a phenomenal job. They actually done such a good job last year. Uh, Hannah, on the end, uh, the judges came up to me and said, uh, you have to find a, they had to find a palm print, which they did, they had to find a fingerprint, which they did, they had to find the DNA and the blood, which they did. But she actually packaged a hair, and they got extra credit. The hair wasn't even a part of the crime scene. There was an extra hair that they found under one of the mannequin's feet that wasn't even a part of the crime scene, but since they found it, they got the extra credit for it, so. Very proud of these young ladies, very, very bright future for all of them. Thank you.
I, I'd like to take a minute, first of all, for the two of you that have committed to the military. Very proud of you and thank you. Um, it, it's just amazing what all you've already accomplished. This is, I just got goosebumps all over the place listening that you went in and kicked butt last year as juniors, and we know you're going to do it again, so congratulations, and look forward to, once you move on, to come back and visit us and let us know what you're doing as your career, because, uh, I can see, uh, very bright futures for all three of you, so excellent. You want to get patted down?
I did, four years ago.
I want to see you get tased and patted down.
I did.
Do you have anything else to put with that?
Yeah, yeah, one, one other thing. Girls, great job, and good luck tomorrow in your competition. Um, and I just wanted to mention that, uh, last week, um, up at De Russell Lee, we had the Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, came down for our manufacturing signing for our 58 students in the manufacturing classes, uh, the one at Colrain and the one up at De Russell Lee. And it was, it's just like, it was so cool how they did this. It was just like an athlete signing their national letter of intent. These, um, companies come in and offer these kids jobs, and they sign their letters of intent uh, to go work, uh, once they graduate, and, uh, for these kids. And, um, we had been working for a couple of years to try and get Secretary, uh, DeVos down here, and she came down and met with every kid, shook every kid's hand, talked with them, you know, was there for a couple of hours, and, uh, was so impressed with our kids at Butler Tech. And, uh, it was a great experience. And, uh, and I wanted to thank, um, Mark Zimmerley for coming in representing Northwest High School. Um, it was, it was a great, great day.
Lot of great things going on, great opportunities for all our kids. Okay, we'll move on to reports from employee organizations. Do we have any representative from certificated or licensed employees? Any reports from employee organizations, classified? Any reports from school-related organizations? I have not received any requests for community communications. So we'll move into certificated and licensed personnel.
The first item is a certified licensed personnel item. It is certified retirements and resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Motion passed five to zero.
Waiting for it to change, sorry. Next item is classified personnel items, classified retirements and resignations. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments regarding classified retirements and resignations? Motion passed five to zero.
Good evening. First, I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the March 11th regular meeting minutes that were in your packets.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or additions to the meeting minutes from March 11? Motion passed five to zero.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the March 18th work session minutes that were in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the meeting minutes from the work session on March 18? Motion passed five to zero.
Okay, for our financial report for the month of February, uh, our all funds, fund balance was a little over $67 million. Our general fund unreserved balance was a little over $36 million. Our revenues for the month of February came in, year-to-date, at 71 million, which is about 80% of our, uh, projected because of taxes. Taxes come twice a year, so we're slightly ahead because of the, um, January, February, second half. But then we don't get taxes again until the next fiscal year, so, uh, revenue will come down as we get towards the end of the year. And our expenditures at 62 million are on target and projected at 66% for, for the fiscal year. Our average return of investments is 1.89%, so right around the benchmarks of 2%. Uh, we ladder our investments, so some are, are out a little longer, and as they mature, they'll catch up to the, uh, in- interest increases that the feds have done. And for the monthly bills, we have our routine bills, as well as master facility project expenditures, the commissioning of our buildings. We had our B W C self-insure workers comp premium. The financial audit was, came due, and we had some bus repairs. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the financial report for the month of February.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the financial report? Motion passed five to zero.
Next, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the amended certificate as a, to accept the amended certificate as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission. This was per our amended appropriations that we submitted last month, so then they amended the certificate.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Motion passed five to zero.
Next, I'd like to ask the Board to authorize payment of an expenditure over $3,000 that did not have a purchase order prior to for special needs transportation services.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the then-announced certificate. Motion passed five to zero.
And finally, I'd like to ask the Board to authorize the rates that have been set by the Hamilton County Budget Commission, as well as certify these rates to the county auditor for collection in 2020. These rates are set for the general fund based on when the levies were passed and what rollback needs to happen in order for the school district to collect the same amount of money as when the levies were passed, as well as the debt service funds. They set the mileage rates based on our principal and interest payments for the debt service funds.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved in second. Are there any questions? Thanks, Amy. Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is a general business item. Resolution for bus purchases through the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution and accept the Rush Bus Center bid for six new buses through the Southwest Ohio E P C as listed. Uh, we go through the E P C to make sure we get the guaranteed load price as information.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions on the bus purchase?
That was a budgeted item, correct? Budgeted for the purchases?
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is a general business item, is vendor contracts. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions on vendor contracts? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is certificated licensed personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve their certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Questions? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is classified personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions on classified personnel items? Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is curriculum and instruction. It is an extended field trip request, Power of the Penn State Competition. White Oak Middle School and Colrain Middle School are requesting permission to take three students to the annual State Power of the Penn Competition at Worcester College on Thursday, May 23rd and Friday, May 24th. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the extended field trip as listed.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. Questions?
Will they be taking bus transportation, or how will they be transported?
Brenda? Bus transportation, or are parents driving them up?
I'd like to take a second to wish the three of them good luck. Um, also, I think tonight was a perfect example of how these kind of opportunities really make a difference and impact our students, so wish them all well. Look forward to hearing how they do. Awesome. It is so quiet in here. It's like... Motion passed five to zero.
Next item is a miscellaneous item. It is a resolution for membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 1920 school year. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the O H S A A membership as listed. This is required on a yearly basis for both high schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions on the Ohio High School Athletic Association membership? Motion passed five to zero.
All right, for my update, the first thing I would like to do is invite everyone in the audience, to our levy committee fundraising meeting. It will be next Monday night. Our next work session will be at Colrain High School. The May 6 meeting will be moved to Northwest High School, so we're trying to go back and forth across the district. It is very expensive to try to, um, pass a levy. The school district is not allowed to spend any funds on signs or, um, publications or anything we would purchase. So ideally, we need community help in order to not only raise funds to pass, um, the coming November possibility of a levy, but also future levies. So we're looking at starting some things that can go on on a yearly basis, and if you would like to participate, um, we will have our second kickoff meeting, um, next Monday night, 5 o'clock, Colrain High School. Um, and the location, as soon as you show up, we'll determine. Jack was trying to rearrange the schedules for some things. Uh, secondly, uh, wanted to comment on the parent meeting we had at P R E, um, last Wednesday. Things that were discussed were much-needed discussion about items. We looked at a parking lot expansion. Even though we've had some events where we haven't had enough parking, um, the carnival was Saturday, but the issues come down to is, if you want to have something during the day and teachers are in both lots at Pleasant Run Middle and Pleasant Run L, we need an extended parking area for that to occur, um, because there's not something you could have, let's say, if you wanted to have muffins with mom, uh, donuts with dad, something like that. It would be difficult when staff parking is there. So, we had S H P here looking at that. Um, we also put drones in the air, um, last Thursday. Some of the kids saw them, commented on them, but it gave us a great view of entry and exit. Um, so we will be evaluating everything that we learned. Um, we are also looking at arrival to school. Um, we noticed that we stacked up cars 21-deep, starting from the front of the school here all the way back up...
all the way back up past the Pleasant Run Middle entry area. One comment that the group brought to us is this missile was working very well if we could speed up drop-off. So we are definitely looking at that. So we will have members of our architect and S H, S H P and Chris McKee. And we will be looking at all of this and we will be reporting back to let them know what our findings are. We have some suggestions. We're looking at how can we more effectively use the bus lot? What happens in the morning is the bus lot circles around and you'll have seven buses lined up behind each other in the front here. The most we got was at eight. But if we would change that and put the buses in the slots, there would be the availability of possibly teachers coming in this exit because the road on the other side of the building is not wide enough to accommodate parents waiting to drop off kids. And it's not fair to teachers who are trying to get to work on time and can't get around. So we will look at whatever we can do for that situation. We will also look at a divider to divide some things off to assist with drop-off in the morning, but also evening events that we have here at both schools. So all of it is under discussion. We'll be coming back to a recommendation to the Board hopefully toward the end of May. We have some ideals of some things we want to try in May, but it's going to take great communication on the business department to get out to the parents what we might try or change. And then we also have to work with Casey and Jamelle to see what, if any, days of classified employees need to be extended to monitor certain parts. We'd like to have somebody full-time over here to crosswalk because even though we tell the kids not to cut through grass and cut through cars, it'd be nice to have an adult there to redirect them and make sure people are starting, stopping and starting for the traffic. Additional support to possibly open the gate, additional support here in the cafeteria. So we'll be coming back in May with recommendations on all of that. But it was a great meeting. Truly appreciate even some of the parents that are here tonight for vocalizing their concerns and letting us know what they are. And we are taking it very serious and we will be addressing them. The other thing that I'd like to mention that was brought up the other night is equity and staffing for each of the school. There is some schools that have more IEP students or economically disadvantaged students than others. And then there's just overall mental health issues that we're dealing with in all our schools. So they would like to make sure that staffing is not just handed out and you get five, you get five, you get five. But instead, it's based upon the needs of the students, the teachers and the administration. And we look at it that way and we are doing that also. So that's all I have for the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we have community comments. If there's any questions that you have for what was discussed tonight? Yes?
I happened to go to the Colrain Township board meeting. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about sidewalks and more camps for Colrain Township. We had the Hamilton County Ed Monto engineer at the board meeting. And he stood up in front of the audience to allow all this to hear at the same time. Some kind of money, federal money or something's come into the Hamilton County. And he told Colrain Township, part of that money is going to come into Colrain Township. And how he explained this was they want a partner with Colrain Township. And when I gather, and I'm not an engineer, they're really doing the excavation and tearing up of the area and whatever else that entails. And then they want Colrain Township to put over the money to actually pour the cement and make the sidewalks. Of course, Colrain Township is like, we don't have any money, you're not going to take all of it. Then they started saying, what about the school board, is there input? So I'm just suggesting that after that meeting, someone needs to get with them and tell them, pull up the wake-up meeting. And Steve, he's the very first speaker of the evening, so you know, the whole meeting was pulled, that meeting, it was a nice meeting. And just see what he said, so you can hear what the trustees said back to him, what he's saying to the trustees. I thought it was very interesting that I remember who's been telling you that, you know, we keep saying, another meeting of your responsibility. He actually said, it is our responsibility, we do now have the funds, it's coming in. You need to tell me whether we want to have you allocate this money to Colrain Township. And one of the trustees brought up the sidewalks for Colrain High School. And no one brought up U R E and I didn't say anything. But the fact that they kind of pushed back when they were saying they want you to partner, they want you to partner. And kind of push it back about that. So that's something you as a board might want to look into.
I had a meeting with Raj on Friday for lunch. Amy and I are both presenting at the May 7 Colrain trustee meeting. It's finalized late this afternoon. So I'll be getting with the Board together their input, provide what Amy and I were going to present. And we'll make sure they have input on what we say there. They mainly wanted to hear about the levy and the deficit spending. But we can also add this part in so everybody can hear it. Because Amy can get very detailed with what we are allowed and not allowed to do if it's not our property.
Anybody else? All right, this time we'll go to board member comments. Joe, do you have anything?
I just wanted to ask Todd, what's, what's the baseball field look like at Colrain? Done?
It is done. The sidewalk is in, the reaffirm. Chris, you want to comment?
They're still using the field, so the area that's being finished is outside.
So it's not affecting play.
Let the completion be done before summer?
Yes.
Diane?
My comments are in relation to the comment here about the sidewalk. It is definitely something a concern of mine. And I will, I'm very anxious to hear the comments that you have on what we're going to do about this. That we have, you know, no busing to the high schools and we don't have a path for the students to walk. It's something that's definitely a concern of mine. So I'm looking forward to hearing what the, the next steps are in moving that forward. And I definitely offer my support and attending or speaking or anything I can do to help move this along. I'm more than willing to do.
Thanks.
Mark?
First, I want to congratulate the PTA reflection winners. You know, that's the, that's the chemistry that happens behind the scenes that really alter our children's lives. I know it has for my children. Next, I want to thank Butler Tech, especially that was presented this evening. And also Donnie Kelly, who my church stepped up and did a band room extreme makeover while the kids were in New York. And we thank Chris for his help with that as well. They came in, replaced carpet, painted the rooms and did a lot of repair. And Donnie and Donnie Kelly's team come in and did some general construction. And then the last thing I want to do is I would like to challenge our community. As we read on Facebook all the things that come in, there are a million positive things that happen in our school district. A lot of times, it seems like we get focused on the negative. And I would like to challenge people to every negative comment that you hear, to challenge it with two or three positives that you hear. There's a lot of stuff going on. We don't do everything right. I don't think anybody has ever acted like they've done anything right, done everything right. But we certainly try. We try to make the right decisions. We try to do right by the children. We try to use the money that we have the best way. And it takes the entire community to come together and unite and power each other's thoughts, opinions and motivate each other. So that's my challenge to the community.
Thanks, Mark.
I'd like to second that challenge that Mark put out there. I mean, just tonight, just with the three criminal justice students, what they're doing, you know, how they're competing. You know, these 58 kids that last week, when I was there for their, the manufacturing signing. There's a lot of good stuff going on in this district and, you know, like you said, everybody seems to focus on one negative thing. And I wholeheartedly behind that with you on that. But other than that, that's, that's all I had.
Well, and, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about the, the kids, but the kids tonight, and it's just a fraction of what goes on every single day in this district. To hear the young lady from Pleasant Run Elementary and how well she did describing, you know, the slideshow and, and you could just tell how much she enjoyed that opportunity to spend the night at the zoo and, you know, to hear someone excited about, you know, playing with cockroaches and, and learning all about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's just really neat because there, there are times where, you know, we might take some of these things for granted. But maybe some kids don't get the opportunity to do some of these things that our, our field trips provide. So certainly want to thank the PTA is, is a big part of helping that make that happen. Because unfortunately, everything costs money. And, but I know there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes. The other thing, just hearing just the, the few teachers that were recognized tonight, and I know we're doing more at the next meeting. You, you can hear that, that's just, just a small piece of, of the type of teachers and employees that we have in this district. And, and to, to listen to the gentleman that teaches the, the criminal forensics class and, and to hear how much he's built that up in four years and wow, just, you know, I, I feel like at least one of those girls will be in the FBI soon. I mean, it's just amazing what, what, what the opportunities they're getting to learn while they're in high school. So want to congratulate all them. Another thing I would like to congratulate, and I have it here in front of me, is to Amy Wells and Chris and the entire treasure department. They were awarded for outstanding financial reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International. So I would like to give a round of applause to this award and to this department that works so hard behind the scenes to, to keep all this together. And sure.
I don't mean to speak after, but we mentioned a lot of, when it comes to the sidewalks, about Colrain Township, but I don't want to forget Springfield Township. We do have a lot of areas in Springfield Township that are near those sidewalks as well to access the homes there.
Keep a road in that area.
Yeah, so we need also some feedback or some updates on what's going on for the Springfield Township community as well.
Okay.
The next item is an executive session item. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the motion to move an executive session as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? We will be moving into executive session. You're welcome to stay. However, we will just come back and adjourn. There won't be any other business after we get out. So thanks, everyone, for coming.